Welcome everyone to what promises to be a fascinating 45 minute webinar that we're calling Reimagining Leadership in Sport: Looking Ahead. And this is being streamed on day three of the SEGA Web Summit on Female Leadership in Sport. It's my absolute pleasure to start by inviting our wonderful panel of female leaders to introduce themselves for a couple of minutes. After this, we're going to explore three critically important questions for leadership in a post-COVID world. The first question is about leading with purpose. The second question focuses on integrity and how we make that part of the DNA of all sports organisations. And the third question is about leadership and the way leaders help everybody inside organisations to feel they matter. So let's start with introductions. I'm going to invite Katie to kick off first, please.
Thank you, Tony, and it's a pleasure to have you moderate this session. My name's Katie Simmons. For those that don't know me, I'm the Global COO of the Sport Integrity Global Alliance, and I lead the SEGA Women Mentorship Programme, which was conceived in 2018. I'm a sports lawyer by trade, but I'm going to keep my intro short because I want to get right into the meat of the discussion.
Thank you, Katie. Sarah Solamale.
Hello, Tony. My name is Sarah Solamale. I'm a French lawyer and also a governance expert. I currently work at FIFA as a senior manager for the member association's governance, and I'm a SEGA mentor as well.
Thank you, Sarah. Grazie la thank.
Hello, Tony. It's nice to be back again. My name is Grazia Thake. I am the CEO of the Optimization Hub, which is a specialist company in athlete mental health. I also sit on a few different panels and boards around diversity and inclusion. My background hails from forensics, corporate and sport.
Thank you, Grazie la. And Nomsa Mahalangu.
Hi, thank you, Tony. And it's such a lovely privilege and honour to be amongst such beautiful ladies. And I'm Nomsa Mahalangu. I hail from Africa. I'm a Senior Director of Sport at University of Johannesburg. I lead the University Sports South Africa, and I'm also President of Federation of Africa Universities Sport. I'm a sports activist.
Thank you all very much. Wow, this certainly does promise to be a wonderful conversation. So let me ask for your thoughts, please, on the first question. And the first question is this: The female thought leader in the States who's called Brené Brown has defined leadership in a really interesting way, I suggest. She defines it as anyone who takes responsibility for finding potential in people and processes, and who has the courage to develop that potential. I wonder how you feel about this statement as we reimagine leadership in a post-COVID world? And I'd like Grazie la, if you'd like to kick us off with that one, please.
That's right up my alley. Thank you, Tony. So for myself, that's everything that's the heart of leadership. Leadership for me is about coming from the back and allowing a pathway for everyone else to go forward. So it's a great privilege to be a SEGA mentor, but I see mentoring as a responsibility of leadership. And so leadership actively is about making way for others to find a pathway to walk beside you. So in everything we do, I know in our organisation, that for us has been at the front foot of enabling athletes to lead their lives better through sport and after sport, but also sports governance and leadership, creating pathways for diversity and inclusion. I think we all hold the mantle of leadership in everything we do. And so when we look at the opportunity to lead, it's not just with a title. We all have that opportunity. And so if we take that into ourselves and embody leadership, it really just is about looking around us and saying, how do we better our community by working together? And who needs a hand?
Thank you, Grazie la, for that. Nomsa.
I think I fully agree with Grazie la's statement. You know, it's all about each one of us holding hands, because for me, leadership is more about serving and making other people's lives better. And in the process of leadership, it is important for leaders to understand that they also learning from those that they are leading, because the myth of thinking that leaders know everything is actually a challenge. And I believe in leading from the centre, meaning I need to put myself in the centre of what those around me are going through. And obviously, with the SEGA Mentorship Programme, it has allowed me to learn from other mentors, but also learn from the mentees as well. So for me, leadership is about educating, empowering and coaching more than anything.
Thank you, Nomsa. Sarah, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, Tony, for me, I think leadership is really about how to unite people around a common cause. I think this is a crucial aspect of it. And culture can definitely be the core element of leadership. So it's important to have a culture, to build a culture that aligns with people's value, you know, what people seek nowadays in workplaces. It's whether they can intertwine their beliefs with those of the company, or whether one can work together based on a common vision or a common purpose. So people want to make somehow a difference nowadays, and they want to have a positive impact on the society. So what enables the culture to thrive is the extent to which employees are empowered to be engaged, whether they feel valued, whether they feel that they are being heard. And that's, to me, the definition of leadership.
Thank you, Sarah. So we've got issues around mentoring, around servant leadership, leaders that learn, common cause and culture. Katie, what's your take on this first question?
Well, I think I'd like to start by saying that leadership, it's a series of attributes. It's almost that je ne sais quoi, that you can't quite put your hand on or your fingers to. But it's a mixture of intelligence, motivation, inspiration, instigation. And I think listening as much as leading creates the best leaders. And it also defies gender. Leadership in the past, I think we've looked into the past about what makes a great leader, from Plato to Machiavelli to Sun Tzu. And really, I think now we're at the precipice of redefining that. And that's what really excites me about today's conversation, and probably the only advantage of COVID, which can transcend leadership styles. We're all here. You can all see us in our intimate rooms. We've got dogs walking past. We've got kids coming up. And that's really eroding that kind of hierarchical sense of leadership, that certainly when I was at law school and back in the early days of my legal career, those sort of hierarchy sense and patriarchal systems are now starting to be broken down. And I think so much the better for that.
Thank you, Katie. I mean, you mentioned the term great leader. You know, the reality of life is that not everybody can be great, but we can be the best that we can be. And I guess one of, as we reimagine leadership going forward, probably one of the challenges I suggest is how we move from good to great. How do we move that, you know, up a notch and dial that up even more? So there are plenty of challenges and opportunities ahead of us, I suggest. Let's move to question two, which I feel is at the heart of SEGA, the question of integrity. One of the challenges I'm suggesting, and opportunities, I guess, of COVID-19 as well, as we reimagine leadership work, is how we make integrity the DNA of every sports organisation. And although this is a very contentious and value laden issue, I wonder if I could invite you all to think about your top priority for trying to make integrity part of the DNA of each organisation. And I'd like, Katie, for you to kick that conversation off, please.
Well, to quote the lady you quoted at the beginning, integrity is choosing courage over comfort. And I love that quote. It's not for me, sadly, but I'm happy to repeat it here, because I think getting out of the comfort zone of sports organisations, breaking up the rulebook, that's how we're going to ensure that there's integrity in the post-COVID era. And how we're doing that at SEGA is by bringing accountability to sports organisations. And with that takes courage. It's disrupting how we always did business before, and sort of creating a new rulebook, which can move forwards. And I think that the SEGA Independent Rating and Verification System, which is essentially going to rate and assess sports organisations' compliance with a set of universal standards, it's not innovative. Other industries have independent oversight, but it is innovative to sport, and it will bring that accountability. And that's sort of getting outside your comfort zone, and not just looking in the mirror and seeing how good you look, but getting somebody else to assess you. That's how we're going to bring about a new set of values. And I think today, and Sarah mentioned this earlier, that people want to, you know, prioritise values, especially in the post-COVID era. We are now seeing that values and what matters to us, and how to make other people feel mattered, is key to creating a better world. And I think that good governance is at the heart of that. Good governance is democracy, it's transparency, it's stakeholder representation. And those things, if we put those into an organisation, ultimately make people feel mattered, and will ensure that we lead with integrity post-COVID.
Thank you, Katie. And thank you for opening up the Feeling You Matter debate, which we'll get to in a while as well, because each of these three questions obviously are very much interlinked. I mean, Sarah, do you have any views on something which is becoming very important and critical? And that's this positive disruption, being positively disruptive, and creating brave spaces for people to actually say what they really think and feel as we move forward. Over to you, Sarah.
Yes, I think it's the core of the message today. Leadership should be somehow, you know, the trigger to ensure that a safe space can be created. And integrity is the core value of this safe space. So leaders obviously need to create this culture where people feel that the main values that they are actually promoting, that is in their personal or professional life, is also integrated fully in their workplace. So the culture is key. Again, we go back to the same concept. It's really important, obviously, to build this culture from the start, that is, you know, through good governance, meaning through regulatory system in paper, but it's also very important to ensure its implementation. And this is, to me, the most important part of a leader is to have the courage, you know, to maybe point out when these core values, such as integrity, ethics or transparency, that are sometimes and most of the times nowadays enshrined in the constitution or regulatory system of sports federation are, in the end, maybe not fully enforced. So it's really important to have such a culture. And this is the role of the leader, according to me, to set the tone from the start.
Thank you, Sarah. I mean, what I'm hearing is that integrity needs to be a core value. But I put it to you that one of the things about values is that values have to be lived out in action. You know, there are things called espoused values. That's the things we say. And then there are values in action, which is things that we do. So there has to be some match between what we say and what we do inside sports organisations. Otherwise, the people and the organisation is a living contradiction. It actually says something, it publishes something, it's in the brochure or on the website, but in action it does something quite different. Sarah, seeing as you just started that little trail of thought off, would you like to come back on that one before I invite Grazie la for her thoughts on how important it is to live our values out in our practice?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, it's actually in line with the message that is to be given today. You need, you cannot only talk the talk, you need to walk the walk. So it's really important that your words are actually translated into actions. And again, whatever you write in your regulatory system, in your regulations, in your guidelines or constitution as a sports organisation, will have to be implemented. And this is this implementation, this active part of the work that is crucial in sports nowadays. And that's what also the public and the audience is looking for.
Thank you. I mean, Grazie la, you know, this word integrity is gaining momentum and gaining traction, and SEGA is doing a fantastic job in promoting this. How can we, how do you think we can avoid being fashion victims? Because, you know, integrity, like a lot of other things, is, you know, is on the tip of many people's tongues. How can we actually, as Sarah was saying, really walk the walk? What would be your number one practical suggestion for making this, you know, an integral part of a culture or an organisation?
So for a number of years now, Tony, and I just have to applaud what both Katie and Sarah have said, but for a number of years, I've been teaching leadership development. When I walked out of forensics, I walked straight into working with corporate and teaching leadership and what we call then transformational leadership to multinationals. And it's something that I struggle with quite often in sport, because I think leadership does take a lot of courage. Sport, on its head, as John Amici would say, unfortunately doesn't really push autonomy. And autonomy is where that courage comes out. You know, we are in a lot of systems in sport, and the governance of sport, sometimes, you know, our athletes become gladiators. Very subjective sport sees us, you know, building fear within our athletes. And I struggle with this consistently, because I'm constantly, especially now as we take athletes through numerous transitions, such as lockdown and quarantine, struggling with sport a little bit to, to the contrary, sort of challenging sports leaders to say, well, how well are we taking care of our athletes? How well are we taking care of our environments? The courage of governance and leadership and the courage to lead with integrity is a topic fairly close to all our hearts. And if we're going to sort of boil it down to practical tips, I said today, actually, in a speech, you know, we all know how we want to feel when we get up. We say the very basics, that we treat others as we want to be treated. But I go to bed with one person, and that's myself, and I have to wake up with my values every morning. So you know when you've done something right by others, and you know when you've done something wrong. And it really is that laden choice that becomes quite simple. And I think sometimes we become lost in constitutions, values, words. And, you know, having taught leadership in both legal firms and in accountancy firms and in financial institutions, in sport, there's a simple language, which is, you know, we're here to enjoy the rebuilding of community. COVID has placed in front of us an opportunity to look at ourselves in the mirror, as Katie said. And the fashionable item has been, what shall we say that's right? But now we have to say, are we doing it right? And so are we doing it right looks like this. It looks like people walking around, breathing, feeling happy, able and comfortable to express their values and their views, and be diverse and different, and not feel afraid. It is an environment in which we collectively see the action of integrity being the comfort and safety of every person to participate. You know, there are very simple things that give us a barometer for integrity. And integrity to values and actions follows that sense of comfort and safety. I would challenge sport to say, well, I don't think we're quite there. I think we're still living this, you know, epitome of fear in a lot of different areas. And I'm constantly, this is part of my daily grind, because as you were speaking earlier, I was thinking back to being a young female forensic, walking into an environment, into a maximum security jail, and having to break some ceilings with a rod going up my back, saying, well, I belong here. You know, I might look like this, but my heart's here to do the right thing. So, you know, you're constantly challenged by so many different things, and the lens has got to drop to actually see the values in people. And I think integrity is about walking living values. So to do that, we just have to ask very simple questions. Without getting lost in our legislation, we have to say, well, what does it look like? And when it looks like that, how do our people feel? And they need to tell us that they're feeling like that.
Thank you. We'll come back on some of these, some of these issues that we're raising at the end of, you know, the end of our webinar. I'd like to turn to Nomsa and invite you maybe to comment upon the phrase we've heard a couple of times already, which is the courage to lead with integrity. Nomsa, in your experience, where does, you know, where does that courage come from? I mean, we don't get it at a supermarket. So where does it come from?
It's something that comes from within. And as the fellow panelists have said, I think, as leaders, and particularly leaders in sport, we need to look at ourselves with eyes of the people that are outside. Does it look good? Does it make me happy? Because we've all spoken about leaving the values. And Grazie la spoke about when you go to bed at night, does it feel good that you made the decisions you made? Because in most instances, a lot of people tend to think that leadership is a popularity contest. Leadership is all about doing the right things. And at times when you do things right, you then become unpopular. So as a leader, you must be willing to be hated at some point. And you must be willing to also look at yourself and say, the decision I made was not right at that particular time. And you also need to own up, because in most instances, we get lost in constitutions, we get lost in a whole lot of documentation, and we miss the point of being true to ourselves. And in the process, become true to the organisations that we serve. Because I think largely, as human beings, we want to lead great organisation. But in the process of making these organisations great, they need to be authentic organisations. And for me, an authentic organisation is an organisation that has integrity. And for organisations to have integrity, it must be led by honest people. Honesty is not about me being honest to all of you, but it is also about me being honest to myself to say, this thing is not working, or this thing is working. And I think it cannot look like a duck, but it swims like a fish. So it has to be what it is, because something red will always remain red. It cannot change colour. And we can't have organisations that are led by people that continuously goes. Your values cannot change, regardless of what the situation is.
Thank you, Nomsa. I did appreciate your reference to fish. My father was a fisherman, and he brought me up with the strapline, only dead fish swim with the tide or swim with the current. And I think that's particularly appropriate for the conversation we're having now, which is how in our leadership role, you know, we have the courage to positively disrupt and actually swim against the current. Sarah, I'd like to bring you back in on this one, if I may, just to join up three ideas: female leadership with courage and doing the right thing. One of the things, of course, we know is that, you know, leadership per se can be a very lonely, a lonely role, a lonely job. How can you be a female leader with courage doing the right thing and avoid feeling super vulnerable? In other words, you know, doing it alone. What is some of the strategies to avoid being picked off and vulnerable as we push that agenda forward?
I think it's important to be, to have a support system. And the support system can come from your workplace, so the organisation where you work, or it can be also outside this organisation of yours. I try to mix up a bit of every kind of support possible. So having allies, having cheerleaders, all sorts of categories of support, that then allow me to, you know, remind myself that if I'm pushing towards these targets that I actually set, and that I think will be good for my organisation, it's because it's the right thing to do. So in order for me to really remind myself at the end of the day that I did the right thing, even though it was maybe not popular, I try to repeat that to myself, but I must admit, sometimes it doesn't work. So that's when the support system kicks in. I would say that's my number one tool in order to push myself to reach my objective.
Thank you very much for that contribution, Sarah. I'd like to just go back to Katie, if I may, because one of the things that strikes me in this conversation about integrity being at the heart of the DNA of all sports organisations, is it brings with us two other things, which is the need for an ethical compass and the need for moral courage. And moral courage actually links to doing the right thing, rather than just doing things right. Katie, what, from your lovely experience, what are your views on how we develop in leadership, you know, this ethical compass and moral courage to take a stand when perhaps that stand is actually quite a difficult one to take?
Well, I think you've got to look at what works and what doesn't. Certainly, what doesn't work is a term limit, which is 30 years, which means that no young person who's at the bottom of an organisation can move up in the world. And that, those sorts of things, you know, it's not just morally wrong, it's actually bad business sense. It stifles the need to innovate. And I think one thing in the post-COVID era is the need to innovate. And to, you know, going back to what Nomsa said, for authenticity, and having integrity at the bedrock of your organisation, it does just make good business sense. We're coming out of what's going to be one of the biggest global recessions. Every pound's a prisoner, so to speak. So of course, you should manage your finances prudently. Of course, you should be accountable. Of course, it makes good business sense to ensure that you've got transparency and good governance embedded in your organisation. And I think that the good leaders and those that are courageous enough to say, look, well, actually, this is how we've done it in the past, but this is a time to reset the button. Let's look at our policies, but not just the policies. Let's take a temperature gauge of what is good governance, and what is the temperature in terms of the culture of the organisation? How can we measure that? And I think by going through the independent rating system that SEGA is offering, it's not us rating, it's the British Standards Institution, one of the most renowned standard setters and implementers in the world. And it's not being machine-gunned against the wall. I want to make that really clear. It's a collaborative process. They'll do a gap analysis. They'll say, well, look, you scored bronze in this area, and silver in this area. This is what you need to do to get to silver. Why wouldn't anyone want to get to gold? And it doesn't have to happen overnight. It's a cumulative thing. So I think it's taking those courageous steps, looking yourself in the mirror, and also ensuring that to the sponsors and those that invest in you, that you are authentic, that you have integrity. Because that's why sports organisations are sponsored. That's why the fans invest their time. That's why the sponsors invest their money. It's for all of those reasons that's underpinned by sport. And if those aren't upheld, then that's just a shame. So I think turning a page, moving forward, we need to ensure that those cultures are measured and those temperatures are taken.
Thank you, Katie. Grazie la, I wonder if you can take the conversation forward again for us, because I think one of the things that we're learning today is that, you know, integrity doesn't just reside within the individual. It's a collective business. It's a collective commitment. And that's, I guess, why we're talking about the culture piece and how we develop cultures of integrity. Grazie la, from all your experience, what are some of the things that you've learned can help us to build a culture where integrity is at its core? Because culture is this big, amorphous kind of blob of a word, isn't it? And it means lots and lots of things, and it develops over time. What have you learned about trying to develop this cultural piece with integrity at its core?
I think you have to be not afraid to challenge what you're there to do. If you're looking at culture, you have to be able to evolve culture continuously and be responsive to your community. So when COVID hits, you know, you say to yourself, right, so what does my business do? Am I developing what I need to, to work in symbiosis with the environment around me? And then how do I appeal to the team that I'm leading and the stakeholders I work with? And then how do I appeal to the team that I'm leading and the stakeholders I work with to evolve a new culture, to develop, to adapt, to grow? The challenge, I think, for most leaders and also for all of us is to look at, you know, are we here doing what we're meant to be doing and how do we evolve the culture around us to serve that? How do we bring people with us? Again, I think it comes down to those basic facts. Are you willing to challenge people to say, look, you know, how authentically are we doing things? I mean, I, I don't really struggle with culture, but I, I struggle with having to challenge people continuously. And, and I think as Nomsa said, it's not a popularity contest. So when you're leading a culture and you're evolving a culture, you have to be dynamic. You have to respond. You have to challenge. You have to say it how it is. And say, look, we're here to do something together, whether I'm wearing the uniform today or not, you know, we're here with a common cause. So therefore to move forward together, are we doing this with, you know, integrity? I hope I'm not coming back to the same things, but I think, you know, culture itself asks and begets us to do the same things. Have courage, lead with integrity, make sure that we're serving the community, ask ourselves what our values are. But also to come back to those very basics around, you know, what is it that we are doing? And are we doing what we're saying we're going to do and demonstrating that? Culture to me is something quite simple when it comes down to the basics. And, you know, maybe it's because I've turned 50, I seem to lack courage, you know, lack sort of, not lack courage, but lack a sense of, I suppose, pause when it comes to challenging people. I'm willing to challenge them straight away and say, do you think we're really living our values here when we do that? And I think that's what culture is about. It's not about saying something, it's about doing something and about doing it together. And you have to be willing to ask the questions and be assessed. And that's where culture comes from. It doesn't come from a uniform of standard or perhaps a brand. It comes from a feeling again, that we're actually doing something together.
Thank you, Grazziella, very, very much indeed. Let's move to the, the third of our three critical questions and open up the debate even more. And this is what some would, would probably describe as more of a psychosocial take on leadership development and leadership work. Recent, recent research in the field of mental health and wellbeing is, is clearly raising the need for leaders to make sure that everyone in their organisation feels that they matter. And this feeling that you matter is being described in three ways. It's, it's feeling that you're being noticed, it's feeling that you're being appreciated and it's feeling that attunes to the organisation's core business and value system. What would be your number one practical suggestion, Katie, for leaders of all sports organisations to start building cultures where everyone, everywhere in their organisation actually feels they matter?
I think we've got to go back and sort of strip it down to the principles of sport ethics, really. I actually wrote them down earlier just to remind myself. But they're fair play, they're solidarity, respect for human rights, dignity. It's integrity. It seems a fashionable word. I don't want to overuse it, but it is in, it is in the, the name Seeger. Diversity and rejection of any form of discrimination. If you have that embedded in your organisation, then certainly I think that you make people feel mattered.
Thank you, Katie. Nomsa, what's your feeling about leaders' ability and capability to make everybody feel that they matter, that they are significant and, and play an important role? What, what's the leadership action behind that?
Well, you, you have to notice your people. You need to get involved in their daily lives. And what we tend to miss as leaders is that we miss the personal touch to this person. We are forever chasing deadlines, chasing targets and forgetting that behind the person that must deliver this target is a mother, is a sister, you need to get to know how their lives are going at home. And I'm one of the leaders that really struggles in thanking people for doing things because I believe that God never thanks the sun for shining. But I've had to learn as a leader that you need to appreciate people, thank them, give that personal touch. Because if you miss that, then you are leading an organisation of people that are actually not there. So all of us need to get in touch with the human side of people in our organisations.
Thank you. Sarah, you know, following on this human side of organisations, this fascinating idea. I mean, we have a lot of stories in the leadership literature around how people inside sports organisations feel that they don't matter. They feel left out, they feel stigmatised, they feel ignored. And particularly in issues around deselection or transitioning from, from sport into another part of their lives or whatever. Sarah, what are your, what are your views on, you know, helping everybody to feel that they matter inside sports organisations that you know?
I think I believe the culture of, building a culture of recognition is important, of inclusion. So it's not only, you know, the acknowledgement and the appreciation of the stakeholders and what they are doing outside is also to include them in the discussion within the relevant sports organisation to ensure that, you know, what they do for the sport that they represent is acknowledged. It's appreciated, but also is included somehow in the policy of the sports organisation. I think that's what I've realised over the past few years, working in a big sports organisation. And also in view of, you know, the past, the past year, maybe with the social, social causes that brought athletes to actually be even more activist than, than before, that there is a real need between the athletes and the institutions, the sports institution to create a strong bridge where each of the stakeholders feel actually involved. So it's appreciation and also inclusion, according to me.
Thank you, Sarah. I'd just turn to Grazziella because I think this is an essential but very complex piece. It's how as leaders, we help everybody to feel they matter and how this relates to notions of mental health and wellbeing, which then supports optimum performance in whatever role we play in, in the organisation. What's your take, Grazziella, on, on joining up those three dots?
I think when you look at the world and you look at the successful leaders who've navigated their way through the pandemic, I think that females have been amidst the greatest in the world to, to lead their countries through the pandemic. And that's not paying a disservice to males. I think that leadership involves a style of parenting as well. I think we need to be able to take on our populations and nurture them and bring them with us. And so in so doing, we've got tasks, we've got deadlines, as Nomsa said. Sarah alluded to the importance of, you know, especially this, this population that's coming through. They want to feel as if they matter, they want to feel heard. And Katie's mentioned, you know, ceilings and limits need to be removed. I think in order to make people feel important and to bring them with us, we have to use a style of parent leadership and servant leadership. We are serving our populations and therefore to make them feel important. It's as much as having a conversation, as much as knowing, you know, I think it's some of the leaders that I've been most impressed with from my younger years to now have been those leaders that you don't even know that they have a title in the organisation. They're down in the car park greeting everybody, saying hello. You know, I, I, it behooves me sometimes when a CEO turns around to say to me, well, that's not what I do. And I think to myself, well, you know, isn't a CEO's job to do everything and to pick up everything and to be part of everything and to know everyone in your organisation and to know what's happening for them and where they're coming from, because doesn't that contribute to the heart of the organisation? You know, people mattering is about having that relationship with them. And I think styles of leadership that are working best in our world today and that the pandemic is throwing up to us are those styles that are parenting, perhaps they're having longer conversations, but they are reaching people and populations. They're asking, how is it? What's actually happening? You know, and love them or hate them, those leaders that perhaps do take time to get on to social media and say, I want to get in touch with my population and find out what's actually happening. And they're talking to people, you know, they're accessible. And they're also, you know, answering questions in a live manner and they're listening to others and, you know, depicting what's important to their population in a broader context. So people feel noticed and that they matter. I think in my own, you know, organisation, one of the things that I, I really take to heart is making sure that I know what's going on for each and every person in the organisation. I reach out to people on a weekly basis. You know, I've had to grow my operations team so that we ensure that whatever's going on, we know what's happening because those are the people we serve first, so they can serve the broader populations that, you know, that we're serving. So I think the art of leading well now is more parent leadership, servant leadership.
Thank you. Just back to Sarah, just, just briefly, if I, if I may. Sarah, how far do you feel that there is a leader within all of us?
Sorry, I didn't hear the question. Can you repeat?
Yeah, sorry. I mean, how far do you feel that there is indeed a leader within all of us?
I believe that the society nowadays pushes us to, to be our own leader, you know, to be our, our own CEO of, of our own life, you know, to, to actually take full ownership of, of what we want to do, what we are doing and what, what the future is going to be for us. So I do believe that every one of us has, you know, this power and is a personal leader. Then it's the question to knowing how you're going to act and whether you're going to show your leadership to the outside world. But every one of us is a leader and this is something that people should not forget.
Thank you, Sarah. And as we move towards the close of this webinar, I'm going to ask all of you a reflective question now. And if you could give me a kind of response in, in one breath or one sentence, that would probably be quite a challenge and, and take us up to time. What is the most significant thing you feel you've learned from this webinar that gives you either an even greater sense of self or gives you that extra bit of courage and inspiration to go out and do your thing? So let's start with Nomsa first.
Well, leadership is beyond the self. That is what for me stood out out of this conversation. It's, it's more than leadership. How do I put this? It's, wow, it, it, it is actually more than what you give, but it is more about what you take and then give back.
Okay, thank you, Nomsa. I'm, I'm really impressed with your breathing rhythm. I mean, that was the fantastic answer. Thank you so much. Let's go, let's go back to, to Sarah. What's your response to, to this?
For me, this session today really emphasised the, the, the reality nowadays that everyone is aware that values are very important and that values are crucial also at work. And that there is obviously a need to have an alignment between these values and the action taken during, within the workplace. So I think that was the, the take for today from my side.
Thank you, Sarah, very much. Grazziella.
For myself, it comes back to, I think, everything that Seeger does and what it stands for and why I'm there and why I'm, I'm happy to be a mentor. I think we're all saying exactly the same thing with different language. I think that's what joins us. And to me, this webinar again reminds me that we've got, you know, a global sisterhood, a global brotherhood, kind of wanting the same sorts of things, that we're connected. Our languages, our cultures are different, our work tasks are different, the language we use at work is different, but we are saying exactly the same thing. And that's what I, I loved and took away from today.
Thank you. Just very briefly, Katie, if, if you can.
I think for me, we're at a key moment in history, is what I've learned. And we can redefine leadership, we can reimagine it. And certainly I love the sisterhood analogy. That's exactly what the mentorship programme is about. It's about growing a sisterhood to help others to leave a legacy of leadership for female, for females in the workplace, in sport. And I would dare all of us to unlock the leaders inside us.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, all panelists.